Meeting is called to order. Mr. John Collins will lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Mr. Joyce, please conduct the roll call to determine if we got a quorum tonight.
Alderperson Wallace?
Here.
Fruit?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Templey?
Here.
Culver?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Karens?
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Was this meeting properly noted?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Aaron. Item two, entertain a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the last meeting. We'll print copies. Approve seven minutes or correct and approve seven minutes. Entertain that motion. How many motions? Motion from Mr. Wallace. Do we have a second?
Second.
I think Melanie won that one.
Okay.
Any discussion of the minutes? Okay, hearing on all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Minutes approved. Item three, approve the agenda. Please take a moment to review. Know if there are any necessary amendments, and otherwise we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion from Karen Templey. Is there a second? Second by John Collins. Any discussion of the agenda? Hearing on all in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. The agenda is approved. Item four, city and utility department had concerns of Mr. Dave Fry.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Billy Jones?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Mr. Glassburner?
No concerns, sir, thank you.
Mr. Bill McCorkle?
A couple items. For Alderperson Wallace, we've been collecting feed information from several communities. We've gotten it together, I assume, working with, actually, we should have some in the next couple of meetings coming to council, maybe. Is that halfway decent? Time frame?
Pretty good.
Okay. Other things, we noticed that a lot of properties in the city, a lot sizes are really a problem with our present setbacks. And we've looked at a couple of cities that were our one, there's a reduced setback type thing. So we're studying that for our city here to see if we can help a lot of people out because they're being private, little projects on there.
Okay. Anything further, Bill?
No.
All right. Mr. Joyce?
I will operate food for thought for the council. Today is election day. It's also council day. I would recommend there be some consideration in the future for if there are elections held on the same day as a council day that potentially the council meeting get moved to a different day.
Okay.
So food for thought in the future, if you will.
Thanks, Aaron. And I think Mr. Richards is with us this evening.
I got no concerns.
Thank you, sir. Item five, treasurer's report.
This is the treasurer's report for the period ending March 31st, 2022. City general had an ending balance of $587,087. State investment pool number one had an ending balance of $4,835,182. The state pool number two, the landfill long-term care, had an ending balance of $577,107. Pool number three, the Tiford, uh, Anarima Estates, had an ending balance of $96,979. State pool number six had an ending balance of $339,417. Library checking had an ending balance of $251,457. And let's see, project four committed, uh, pool account had an ending balance of $1,863,87. Any questions?
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Mr. Joyce? All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Motion from Mr. Culver. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wallace. Any further discussion of the treasurer's report? Okay, hearing on, Aaron, delete. Roll call, roll.
Alderperson Fruit? This is for the treasurer's report. Roll call.
Aye.
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Templey?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Karens?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, item six, discussion and possible action on ordinance amending chapter 309 relating to increasing room tax rate in the city of Richland Center. Mr. Bodie Richard?
Um, no, here we go. Okay, the distance, there we go. So, uh, just to kind of give a little background on this, those of you who were in attendance about a year ago might remember I kind of gave a precursor of this discussion was possibly coming. And essentially what the history is or what's happened is the Richland Center tourism entity has grown. And we have gone out, talked with townships about gathering together as an entity to then advertise and market our area to potential visitors. We've identified who those visitors potentially can be. We know that they are about three hour drive away, uh, that, if you draw that circle, it's Milwaukee, Madison, Chicago, northwest suburbs, even reaching maybe a little bit past. And then Minneapolis, St. Paul. We really have a pinpoint in who our potential visitors to our area are. And so through this process, what's happened is we've learned a lot about room tax. And in Wisconsin, there are 316 municipalities who charge a room or a lodging tax. The average in the state of Wisconsin is about approximately 6.5 percent, just a hair bit above that. So if you took the average of all entities that charge a tax, figure out your average, 6.5 percent. In some, uh, so the highest, uh, single municipalities are charging 10 percent, even though state law says you can only do 8 percent. However, you can get designated as a resort area. And if you go into northern Wisconsin, you'll find there are municipalities there that charge 10 percent. Uh, there are some as low as 2 percent. So the Tourism Commission, through all of this process, we've been discussing this. And currently, the city of Richland Center is at 5 percent. There are quite a few things that we have on our docket we would like to do that are really going to help us to attract people to the area. Uh, for that, of course, we need additional funds and resources to make that happen. We also have a partner in the Town and Vigo who adopted the room tax effective January 1st. Uh, they, uh, set their rate at 8 percent, which honestly is the trend in Wisconsin. So if you go and look at municipalities who have recently, within the last year and a half, adopted the room tax, they typically have taken a rate somewhere between 7 and 8 percent. So with all of that said, um, what, you know, what's the necessity or why would we do that? Let me just share a couple of things with you, um, so that I can use some facts. I'm gonna throw the glasses on real quick. So our website, um, through the work we've been doing, it, for myself, bit of an entrepreneur and a bit of a, I want to see return on my investment. So I want to make sure what I'm doing is working. And through the efforts we've been taking so far, um, our website, just in the last year, so I would, I'd like to look at 12 months because there is a seasonality to this. And if I look at just the last three months, we're gonna look like we're geniuses because there's huge increases in website traffic. Well, if I look at the last 12 months, uh, our website shows an increase of 15 percent over the last year from new, unique visitors. That's a pretty big number, actually. Uh, so 15 percent increase, the biggest and the most exciting increase that I see is if I go into Google Analytics. So most all websites are connected to Google. That's kind of how they measure where your website ranks and what you're doing and the interest you're getting. And this one, um, I feel really good about it. Google Analytics shows a 40 percent increase in searches in which someone actually clicks on our website from the past 12 months. That's, that's a huge number. So 40 percent, then, and this one will knock your socks off, there is a 131 percent increase in visitors who then go and click on the map. So they're actually, yeah, they may read about us and check us out, but now they're going, okay, where is this? And where are we going? And what do we credit that to? Um, one of the items that we know has worked for the last two years, this is our second year of this campaign. You may have seen a little bit of this, um, you won't see it locally, right? We're not attracting visitors from Richland County or Sauk County. We are working out in that area three hours away. We have a billboard campaign, it's a digital billboard campaign, so we can change those images out, we can move them, we can put them in different locations that attract people to the Richland area. So those are in city of Milwaukee, they're in Rockford, uh, they have been in Waukesha, they've been, and we will have them in La Crosse on the interstate as people come in from Minneapolis on that avenue. And those billboards, when we have them running, the way people find our website, by directly typing in our address or direct traffic or by Google jumps to like the number one, number two way that people find us. Otherwise, if we aren't running those billboard campaigns, then it's social media or it is, uh, through the city website, which I haven't figured that one out yet. Um, but it, it has happened. Um, so we know that if we go out and we market this area and get in front of people and use our imagery from our area, people enjoying our resources, enjoying our parks, fishing, uh, Driftless Music Gardens, I gotta be honest with you. If you aren't familiar with Driftless Music Gardens up by Yuba, you'll want to learn more about them. Because when we use their imagery, it moves the needle in a big way. So with all of that said, there is one tactic or task that we really badly want to use. And it's important that we add more townships to help us with this effort so that we can accomplish that. But this discussion tonight also plays into it. And that is injecting our content into streaming services. Now, this discussion might scare a few of you if you have a little bit of, you know, conspiracy theory concerns. But we literally can sit here in Richland Center, Wisconsin, um, we can contract with Gray Media who owns a company called Primerian. Primerian then goes inside of streaming services, so if people in Chicago are sitting watching something on Roku, uh, Fire, uh, Amazon Fire Stick or Hulu, their ad content will come up and all of a sudden they're gonna get a view of Richland County streams, of parks, of Driftless Music Gardens, who knows? And we can even pinpoint to what their interests are. So if they're an outdoor person, they're interested in outdoor content, we will then show them fishing and hunting. Or if music is their thing, we'll show them Driftless Music Gardens. Now, it's affordable for us to do that. Shockingly, it is a reality that we can do that. But that is also a way that we can push that needle and increase those visitors to the area. So there are things we're doing now, employing now, that are obviously working. And then there are things down the road that we would like to do as soon as possible, uh, but we need more resource to do that. So with all of that discussion happening, the Tourism Commission at the March meeting, um, came up with a resolution recommending that the city council, uh, increase the current room tax, which is 5 percent, to 7 percent. There was some debate, um, there was originally a, uh, a, uh, motion, motion, thank you very much. A motion to go with 8 percent, um, but through the democratic process, which I kind of enjoyed watching it happen because on our commission, we are required by state law to have a lodging operator on the commission. And you could kind of tell in the discussion from that original motion, the lodging operator was a little uncomfortable with 8 percent, but yet was very comfortable with 7 percent and even seconded the motion at 7 percent. And then that passed unanimously by the commission. So, um, that is the amendment or the resolution that's been, sorry, the resolution that's been brought to the council today, tonight.
Is that Dennis Brenn?
Yeah.
Is the live member?
Yep. And I can field any questions if anybody has some.
Marty, in the resolution, and then I'll highlight it in the strap of the proposed ordinance, I didn't put a date of effectiveness in there. So, um, that'll be something that unless tourism has a specific recommendation, something good for the council to think about. If you did approve this, you need to figure out when you want it to go into effect. Should it be, uh, done at certain period of time, like the third quarter, fourth quarter, whatever it is that
Absolutely.
would make sense.
For somebody who is doing the books on that, it would best be done at a quarter break.
So I'd like to make the motion, uh, to amend chapter 309 relating to increasing the room tax for the city of Richland Center from 5 percent to 7 percent.
Right, we have the motion by Mr. Collins. Is there a second?
No second.
Second by Sue Fruit. Is there discussion on this item?
Couple things. So, uh, there's other townships that are interested in joining and they're watching this percentage thing.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, we have, um, you know, one township has already adopted the room tax. We have another township who I was just at their town board meeting and they've asked for the ordinance for them to pass within the next, uh, I, from discussion, I would say within the next 60 days, they're looking to adopt it as well. And then there are two others that are active discussions that appear to be positive discussions. And this discussion affects that, absolutely.
So the second thing is I have relatives that, uh, come up from Kansas City area at least a half a dozen times a year and stay at different places around the city. And I asked them, uh, would you mind if you had to pay another dollar twenty cents a night for your room? They said, we're paying 60 bucks cheaper than any other place that we go in the nation right now, so, um, that's not an issue, uh, as far as I can tell. The other thing is, the breakdown is 30 percent of the tax goes directly into the city's general fund. And the 70 percent of the rest of it goes into the, um, marketing organization. In this case, uh, Richland Center Tourism.
Correct. That's, that's correct. And then I, I also, I did not say this, and I should have added it, that effective quite quickly here, as, as fast as we get logo and tagline together, this entity will be known as Gray Richland Tourism. There is a new name selected that's more representative of the group they are promoting and representing. It's not just a, a city entity from a marketing perspective, so that's also part of it.
And one last thing, uh, the city of Richland Center can't levy a half a percent sales tax because we're 25,000 people shy of making that cut. But the county does. And the county has a half a percent sales tax. And I believe if the research was done in the last six to seven years, uh, there's been about a 20 percent increase in that half a percent sales tax, uh, I believe it was 860,000 in 2016. And, uh, projected for 2021 was 1.3 million. So that's outside dollars, purchase that half a percent sales tax. And the more people that we can get from outside of our county to help our tax base, um, I think that tourism can probably do that the quickest, uh, to generate some more, uh, income for the county, which helps everybody because everybody who lives in the city pays county taxes too, so that's all.
Carson, did you have a point?
I was going to ask John if he would consider, uh, amending his motion to include, uh, beginning at the third quarter.
Yes, beginning at the third quarter.
Okay, if anybody did not hear that, Mr. Collins amended his motion as Sue amended her second to reflect that this change in the city room tax would be effective at the beginning of the third quarter of the year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is that it, Carson? One other, Marty, I, I actually attended a meeting in the court in the county board room last week. Mr. Glassburner spoke at, it was the town meeting. And, uh, after the meeting, a gentleman from one of the townships approached me, and you have been there. And they have an internal debate because some of the folks misunderstand and think this is a tax on them. This is not a tax on Richland Center residents. It would not be a tax on township resident.
Yeah, so, um, first of all, you know, I've, I've spoken to that association and it's funny how part of them completely got the concept and part did not. And I, I don't know, I don't, I'm gonna continue to work on that education. And I even put together a frequently asked questions, uh, paper that explains many of the frequent questions. And that's one of them right there, uh, that are specific to the towns as I talk to them, but also in the city of Richland Center. We have private operators that have, um, short-term rental properties. And the question I frequently get is, well, oh my gosh, I've got to come up with that. I'm gonna, whoa, hold the phone. Um, when you go and you get a hotel room on Expedia, or if you go to Green Bay or you go to Milwaukee and stay, you're paying their room tax. This is the same exact situation. And the other concept that comes up every now and then from that discussion is, oh gosh, if one township adopts the room tax and another dozen, that's gonna create leverage, that they're somehow going to market against the other township. And I, I don't know like how you folks look for places to stay, but I really, you know, if you look out on Expedia or if you look on Airbnb or BRVO, you don't know, you can't find the room tax inside of that. Um, if you, specifically, if you go to Airbnb, which is probably the 80 percent of that market that people use, when you book a room, you can't see the room tax. It is put in with other fees. So if you're actually booking the room, it looks like Airbnb is just charging you another whatever, which they are, because a percentage of that they're keeping, but also sales tax and room tax and their charges all in together and you never quite see it broke out. So it, that's part of the confusion is that it is never really explained when you book a room.
Okay, so the conversation I was in, um, to be very specific, and I know it's oversimplifying, but I think it's valid, necessary. The people paying the tax are the people booking a room, you know, hotel or in a bread and breakfast. If you live in Boaz, this has nothing to do with the fact that you live there. It's the gas coming from Mizzamania or Guatemala, doesn't matter, but if you're room, they're the ones who pay this tax.
I think the example I have used best that really resonates when I do explain it to someone is, um, I've driven to O'Hare Airport a ton of times. And as soon as I cross the state line at South Beloit, I have a toll I have to pay to use their road. This is the same exact thing. It should be a user's fee. It literally should be described as a user's fee. Um, to say it's a tax does make somebody locally think, oh, I'm paying that. No, the user, the person who is actually renting a room is the individual paying that.
Thank you, Marty. All right, any, any more questions or comments for Mr. Richards?
Um, one question, please. Um, so this is more probably of how you actually implement this. So Richland Center hotels and Airbnbs will be made aware of this through?
So the communication for local hotels is every quarter, the clerk's office sends an accounting sheet that they fill out, the rates there. There'd be a notice as well, it goes. For the Airbnb short-term operators, that's easier because the Airbnb or any, so I always start using Airbnb, but there's many different short-term platforms. Any short-term rental platform has to stay in tune with that. It's their responsibility. But we also try to notify them as well that there's been a change. And they just change their figure in their booking platform.
And if they don't, is there a way to tell? Have they missed the, missed the memo?
This, this is where it's awesome.
Oh.
Because I just had this discussion last night with a township where they're like, well, what if somebody doesn't pay through a short-term rental platform? We, what are we gonna do? Nothing. You're just gonna tell the Department of Revenue. And the state of Wisconsin Department of Revenue is gonna go deal with it. And they're on the watch because they've had issues. And just January 1 of 2020, the state of Wisconsin passed legislation making the third-party rental platforms responsible for paying the lodging tax. So it's, it's, I want to answer Aaron likes, except every now and then he gets a check that he's like, where, what, what is this? And we have to identify the properties it came from, so that's a good problem to deal with.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? All right, we've got the motion and the second. Mr. Joyce will need to roll call, roll.
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Templey?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Karens?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that puts us at item seven.
Um, Mr. Mayor, can I just say one more thing? Because I never know when to leave.
All right. I'd like to tell you, we're just being polite.
As, as the loan officer once told me, Marty, stop talking, you're gonna talk me out of it. But actually, this is good news. Um, I just want to show, uh, the Tourism Commission has a ton of appreciation for John Collins, the work he did on the Tourism Commission over the time, greatly appreciated. The one thing I'll, I'll say that people probably don't know, um, John would take a personal interest in what the activities were and would do additional research and then come back and we'd chat about stuff. But not only that, he just popped up in places. You know, all of a sudden I'm in Canoe Acopia talking to somebody from central Illinois about coming up here and kayaking. I look up and there's John Collins. So, uh, that's the kind of involvement that we really enjoy at the Tourism Commission level to really understand what we're doing, the value of what we do and the payoff from it. And I know from the rest of the commission, just like to, seriously, from our hearts, thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Marty. Right, item seven, discussion and possible action on resolution adopting a structural document for the Richland Economic Development Board. All right, and this has been, Mr. Glassburner, you will hear the microphone.
I think I'm gonna pass this off right away. We have Chairman Brennan here. He's the chairman of Regional Economic Development. So you've got a packet of documents that would include the resolution that the county just passed, the old structural document, the new structural document, and a synopsis of, of, of kind of the changes that we went through and why we went through them. Um, so there's a lot of information. I hope you had time to review that, but I would defer to Mr. Brennan to answer any questions that you might have.
So let me just try and summarize. You already had this document before you, a month or two ago. There was some suggestion about revisions. The Richland Economic Development Board took those suggestions and I think made nearly every change that was suggested. At that meeting, the mayor, Alderman Culver, and, um, Attorney McGowan were all there, um, as part of that effort. So it was revised, the document was revised. It's already been sent in the county board. They already passed that, approved that. So what you have before you now is what the county board passed, so that's where I'll leave it.
Okay, Mr. Brennan, from the original document to this one, the new one that the county has now passed, what were the key changes, the sort of the key points that were updated?
So the most important thing was that in the original structure of the economic So the most important thing was that in the original structure of the Economic Development Board, there were only three voting members on a board of nine people. So this changed that to make everyone a voting member except the county administrator and the city administrator. Otherwise, they're all voting members now, which we've got people that are running large businesses, 400 employees, and they sat there and couldn't vote. So now they, this would allow them to vote. The other significant change is that it increased the number on the board from nine to 11. So it made room for a couple more people from the community to be able to participate in this board. We've been very fortunate to have a lot of people interested in being involved in this. So we have kind of a competition each time for who gets to be on the board.
That's true. We had several people interested the last time we had an open seat, that's true. Again, I think that was a key point, allowing them all to vote. I'm glad we didn't have, or we're attempting to do.
And I'd just say, most of the changes that were suggested by the city council or county board the last time around, the first time around, had to do with things that were passed and in place by the city council and county board the first time. In other words, they were not changes that we were proposing, they were already there. And the city council and county board were asking for these changes to be made, so most of those were made.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Brenninger? Go ahead, Carson, please speak into your microphone, sir.
You know what I want to talk to Mike? First of all, I'm thankful that we took time to work through this, right? I really believe in, on documents like this, it's better to tell yourself in the beginning than to wait till you have a crisis and then have to figure it out. So both, my understanding is that we have this before us tonight for approval. If we make amendments to it, it will have to go back to the county, all right?
Yes.
And recycle again.
They would then have to approve the changes again.
So I want to bring up, I think I've got four points in here, and basically, our discussion will be a memorandum of understanding between Richland Economic Development and the council entered into the minutes. It gives context instead of amendment, okay? And that's why I want you to be the respondent, because you're still chair, aren't you, of the?
I am.
There you go. All right, if you look at E on the first page, it says, through the Economic Development Director and Red Board will be the point of contact for interested parties for economic investment and development, and will negotiate within its designated powers to bring in potential development to the city and county. Will be the point is the issue. I don't know that anyone who's interested in investing in the city of Richland Center needs to be shuttled to Red Board for first perusal. They might come to us through another avenue. It could be the mayor's office, or several others. What I worry about here is creating a funnel that narrows everything down to the Red Board. And I think you should make an effort to be the point of contact, but I would like to hear from you that the context of this does not preclude investments coming to the city through other avenues. How do you want to respond to that?
Sure. So I think the reason this is in there, we had something like this in the first document, is because there was many different avenues. When people came and were interested in starting, let's just use an example, starting a new business in Richland Center, they might have gone to the mayor's office, they might have gone to one of the city council members, they might have gone to the zoning administrator, or a myriad of others, and they got various answers, and we lost a lot of them. They were very confused. Who do I go to? How do I get this figured out? So the logical path was to have a point of contact to investment, and even though the Red Board is on there, nobody actually comes to the Red Board as their first point, they would generally go to the Economic Development Director. And if something needs to come to the Red Board, then he would bring it to the Red Board, not, they wouldn't come directly to any member of the Red Board. And of course, he's in continuous contact with the mayor, with the county board chair, with the zoning administrator, whomever needs to be involved in the discussion, he brings them together to work through the issues that need to be worked through in order to make things go.
Thank you. The second part of that is, does this conflict with some of the work the Planning Commission does in future development?
Okay, we're going to let Jason take that one.
That's fine.
I don't see that, how it, I don't see that occurring at all. As a matter of fact, we've got a brand-new Planning Commission meeting set for the 27th, I believe, of April, and one of the reasons that's taking place is because of comments that have been made by the council and different individuals in the community that have said, well, we pass a comprehensive plan, but nothing ever happens. And I had said throughout the process of developing a comprehensive plan that through economic development, I want to make sure things happen. So I am actively engaging the Planning Commission so that the appropriate decision channel is followed. And so I don't see any conflict with what's there, what is there, and it's my intention to use the Planning Commission to really discern the right direction for the city and then bring that to the decision-making bodies.
Thank you. Page four, or the other couple over here, they're kind of of the same nature, just making sure we understand. The budget must be approved by both the county board and the city council before it is effective. This is C3. In the event that the budget is not approved by the county board and/or the city council for the succeeding year, the previous year's budget shall be used until such time as both governing bodies approve the succeeding year's budget. Does this conflict with the May's issue terminating the Red Board?
It does, okay. So the question is, does this conflict, in other words, the budget being used in the next year that was used in the previous year? The city council and the county board, according to this document, can withdraw at any time, regardless of any budgetary issues. So that, all this does is say that if the county board or the city council is struggling to figure out whether to pass this budget or put it together with something else, we'll continue to work with what we had the year before. That's all that's doing.
So it's kind of a continuing resolution?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Use the word in here, the board shall report to the city council and county board at least annually through the EDD. I am presuming that both the city council and the board also have the authority to demand a report upon request.
Yeah, I'm sure Jason would be happy to come at any time and report to the city council and the county board. He is happy to do that, and.
Kind of as if my job depends upon it.
What about the chairman?
Well, you probably don't want to hear from me, because I don't know much about day-to-day, although I am deeply interested in the well-being and future of the city and the county. But he's doing it every day, he's living and breathing it, working an enormous number of hours beyond what he gets paid for, so he's the guy. But yes, I certainly would come if the council summons me, or the county board summons me, I'll be here.
Okay, thank you. Page five is the last one, under something on the item four. The Red Board can receive other monies privately from what is budgeted by the city or the county. And could you give us some sense of how that money would be handled in a fiduciary manner? What's the vehicle for?
Sure, so I just want to tell you, this is theoretical at the moment because we don't have any of those funds today. The way those funds would be handled, there'd be a separate account set up that would be under the authority of the Red Board, that would be contributed to not by governing entities, but by private businesses, individuals, whoever. That money in the past, before the structure that was going on now, was used for things like special promotions that were done. I know that, I think Karen, you were involved in trying to bring pop-up, Richland Center blow pop-up businesses. We were trying to do that in economic development way back when. And so all these things need money. Those are not in the budget that the city and the county approve. So if we are at the point, and I hope we get there in the future, at the point where we can raise some of these private funds, we can do additional things, but that will be, that will be dealt with as a segregated fund, segregated from the budgeted funds from the county and the city.
Does that need to be a 501-style status, and will there be audit trail?
Okay, so our present understanding is it does not need to be, although there has been several suggestions that we try and move the Red Board into 501(c)(3) status. I do not object to that. If we have a movement in that direction, that's fine. It would then be the city and county that would actually be contributing to a 501(c)(3) rather than being the overseeing entity of the Red Board.
And what's the audit for? Do you, will the Red Board necessarily have to audit that particular segregated fund? Or will the city or county do that for you, or what?
So I can speak, while I'm chairman, it will be audited, whether it's by the city or the county, or a private auditing entity, it will be audited. Right now, we give, you know, financial reports and the county administrator, because kind of the operations are under the county, the county administrator actually does the auditing himself, but, or he reviews the auditing. So we'd have some kind of mechanism in place like that if we took in private funds.
It would be nice if the county could do it, because if you hire an independent auditor, you're going to have another budget line, and that's for the march.
That's right. So, thank you, Mike.
Send everything, Mr. Culver?
Yep.
All right, anyone else? Okay, here you go for the discussion. Is there, I'll entertain a motion then to adopt a structural document for Richland Economic Development Board.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Culver, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, was that Karen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, here you go. Mr. Joyce will need a roll call vote.
Alder Person Templey?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight, Finance Committee recommendations, Mr. Ryan Cairns.
Item eight, a discussion and possible action on potential purchase of 291 North Jefferson Street parcel. So the finance, we discussed this parcel, it's been vacant for quite some time, years and years and years. The previous process that we used with the county to acquire, what street was the other property?
First Street.
Thank you. Is the same thing that we're doing here. In your packets, you'll see the information that Jason put together, which is very detailed on the property, the amount of act taxes owed, and essentially, the county is asking us that we're interested in doing the same thing. And after discussion, finance agreed, and my motion will be, the city of Richland Center agrees to purchase tax parcel 276-2100-0420 at 291 North Jefferson Street for $1 for the purposes of economic development, redevelopment upon the Richland County Board of Supervisors passing a resolution to sell.
Okay, motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Melanie Walters, is there discussion on this item? I have a question for the city attorney, Mr. McGowan, at what point, so when we did this, I was definitely in favor of this, this house is, in my opinion, a public hazard. I mean, it's a problem. So I'm all in favor of this. Okay, when we did this on First Street, then what we did, of course, is we, the county did this, the city bought it for a dollar, and the city had the house that was there demolished. You know, we own the land, which very soon we'll be putting up for bids. Is there any legal obstruction? Is there a timeframe? Do we know when we could demolish this house?
The plan right now, according to, I think, past discussions was, once they foreclosed on the home through the court process of taking the tax deed, then we could move forward on it. That was the cautionary approach to it. And we don't want to get a situation where we tore down the building before they're foreclosed from, what would you say, from taking back the property or causing additional issues, but.
Okay, excellent. No, I need the microphone over there. Mr. Frye or Cruz already mowing the lawn there?
Yes, we mow the lawn there for the last, what, four years, and we've actually cleared the sidewalks for the last four to five years.
Okay, so, because this could take a little while before we.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the corporate counsel for the county is on the chat, and he stated that there remains a period of time in which the former owner can make a claim against the tax deed process.
That's what I thought. That's what I was trying to get to the bottom of. So in other words, it's not going to add to your workload because your crew's already doing this?
Correct.
Okay, that's why I wanted the microphone over there. That's what all the head motions were for. Okay, and you can hand that back to Jason. All right. Thank you, Ashley Chris, and please thank corporate counsel from the county, if he can hear me, thank you, sir. Anything further to add? Yeah, go ahead, Carson.
I presume then, Ashley, that with this motion, the next step sits with the county that has to approve the sale, and they will not move ahead on that so long as there is an outstanding ability for tax redemption? Is that logical?
I believe they wanted us to promise, or otherwise guarantee, that if they move forward with this tax deed process and foreclose on the property, that we will in turn, once that is done, take title to it. And obviously, the intention is to remove the, what would you call it, you know, dilapidated housing, but.
There's a right of the former owner to contest the process that you executed. So they can say, you executed the process that's outlined in the state statute wrong. You did it wrong. So therefore, they can contest the process and try to reclaim the property. However, that takes, that takes place after the tax deed has come into the ownership of the county, and the county at any time can resell the ownership of that property. It's just that there's a contingent liability that, or an outstanding liability that exists because in state law, it also says the former owner can contest up to three years beyond the taking of the property on tax deed. So the process that we went through on 460 West First Street and working with corporate counsel was to move through a legal process that's called barring the former owner. So you're basically moving through a process that says, hey, you didn't respond to your, to the fact that you owed back taxes, the house is in poor condition, and we are going to take you to court to actually remove the right for you to contest that the process was done inappropriately. So we have to work with the county and corporate counsel to move through that process to make sure that when the city receives it, that we can therefore sell the property without lien. Because when you have a owner that has the right to contest, there's in essence a lien on the property, a banking institution or a title company looks at that and says, and we don't really want to lend you money, and we don't really want a high value, you know, we don't really want a new building on there because the former owner could contest. So it gets really messy. So we have worked hard with corporate counsel and the county to move through that process called barring the former owner, so that once we get it, it's free and clear, we can move through redevelopment process, remarket it, and the new owners are able to develop on it as soon as possible.
That's on First Street.
We've done that on First Street already, and we need to do the same process with Jefferson.
So the bottom line is that our investment's a dollar.
True.
Plus some labor, but we could be up to three. Plus some labor, but we could be up to three years to realize... Anything else there?
Well, it could be if the corporate counsel of the county isn't successful in barring the former owner. However, they worked, he was successful on the first property.
Well, there's no guarantee in the second one, but I, all I'm saying is the window is about three years.
It can be. The last clarifying comment I would make is that having that, having that option, the right of the former owner to contest, does not preclude or prohibit us from removing a dilapidated building from the property. So we have that authority and can move through that regardless of whether that former owner still has the right to contest or not.
Yeah, just a quick question. Okay, so on the first home, on First Street, was it? What was the timeframe that it took to, tell me again what that, what that terminology was?
Bar?
Bar? And I don't understand that...
If Michael is still there, he might be able to answer and chat really quickly. I think that now that we've been through the process, I would, I'm guesstimating that it might be a couple of months. He basically has to file, he has to file a suit to be heard and move through that process, and I think that's a two to three month process. It took us much longer in the first time around because we were brand new at it, and it hadn't been a process that the county had executed, so if Mike was still there, he hopefully...
They were also in the process of change of corporate counsel at that point, which, so there was some delay there while that was going on.
Oh, you're right, that's correct.
The actual process, once the current attorney was in place over there, was two or three months, it wasn't very long. It was basically core calendar, when he could get there.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? All right, so we have the motion and the second, no further discussion, we'll need a roll call vote, Mr. Joyce.
Alderperson, Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Templey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item A, B, Discussion and Possible Action on Allocation of ARPA Funding. In your council packets, you'll see a spreadsheet outlining proposed spending of ARPA funds. At Finance, we discussed this thoroughly and bounced ideas back and forth, and what we came up with was to spend some of these high priority items to get them, to get the ball rolling, to get quotes, bids, et cetera, to get these done in a timely manner. So my motion will be on allocation for ARPA funding for the following: audiovisual slash furniture, upgrade, or ordinance recapping, upgrade of the email to MS Exchange, accounting and payroll software, doors, levers, and keypads, and a reassessment of the city in the amounts that are listed on that sheet.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Templey, is there discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, Aaron will need a roll call vote.
Alderperson, Walters?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Templey?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item A, C, Discussion and Possible Action on Awarding Bids for Parks and Grounds Zero Turn Mowers. The park board opened the bids, the park board discussed all the bid specs, what was needed, they voted, the recommendation from the park board was brought to Finance. You can see it, your packet outlined on the second sheet, a nice spreadsheet that shows the top half is showing the mower, the 72-inch mower, zero-turn mower, the different bids that came in. It also shows the mower that it's replacing directly under that, and then the bottom half of the sheet shows the 60 to 61-inch cutting deck zero-turn mower, and same thing, the mower it's replacing. The park board's recommendation is highlighted in that light green in each. My motion would be to award the bid to Homesteaders for the Ferris ISX 3300 in the amount of And then the other mower from Simpson's, the Dixie Chopper 4060 VGE Classic, in the amount of $11,997.
All right, we've got a motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Scotty Wallace, is there discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, Aaron will need a roll call vote.
Alderperson, Cairns?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Templey?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item A, D, Discussion and Possible Action on Approving Purchase of Door Lock Using ARPA Funding. You will see in your packet, a very nice breakdown of what is needed, and these are, these are all door locks that are used, city buildings, they have a keypad access, so that we're not handing out keys. You can see the four bids that came in, and I bid quotes. Because of the expediency of getting this done, my motion would be to award the quote to Perkins Lock and Security in the amount of $16,144, and waive the bidding requirements for these locks.
Okay, motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Melanie Walters, is there discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, Aaron will need a roll call vote.
Alderperson, Wallace?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Templey?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Item Nine, Discussion and Possible Action on Seeking Application for Appointment of Alderperson to fill the vacancy in District Two. So what's going on here is a year ago right now, Chelsea Walters was elected to a two-year term. She informed us earlier this year that she had taken a job in Sock City and was relocating, which has now happened. So she had to resign, because she's no longer a city resident. We had the first council meeting in March, we announced that publicly, and Chelsea stated her last day as an Alderperson would be the 11th of March. I stated that any resident living in that district who had interest in filling that seat could contact myself or the city clerk. I've not been contacted by anyone in the city, Mr. Joyce, have you?
No.
Mr. Joyce has not. So the one conversation I did have was Mr. Carson Culver approached me and indicated a willingness to fill the final year of that term if the council so chooses. That's the information I have. For this point, I'll open it up to discussion or a possible motion.
I will make a motion to point Carson to the final year of Chelsea's term.
All right, we have a motion by John Collins, is there a second? Second by Ryan Cairns, any further discussion?
Other than a possible amendment to limit his speaking time at mid-meeting.
Hanson, make sure that he moves his microphone close to you.
I'll help you with that. Yeah, I'll add that to the motion too.
Speaking of, did you have anything to say, Mr. Culver?
Not after that.
Can't be friends like that.
Right.
All right, any further discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, Aaron, let's have a roll call on that.
Alderperson, Fruit?
Aye.
Collins?
Definitely.
Templey?
Aye.
Culver?
Abstain.
Walters?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion carries, so I should be a wise guy and make Carson sit over here for the next meeting, but I think I'll be nice and you can stay where you are.
Well, unless there's a protest from the nobody seated, I would sit First Street.
Right, all right. Item Ten, Report on Public Nuisance Ordinance Violations and Citations Issued, Police Chief Billy Jones, not sure where the microphone is.
I don't believe I have anything to add on the nuisance ordinance since the last meeting. I can report that conversations and letters have been sent to the address of 1245 Ithaca Road. The property owner there is quite accepting and understanding of his situation and is diligently working. So we had an agreement by April 30th, hopefully, his property will be looking better, but we all know how, how it's been going. So the other, the other thing I just want to bring up is the nuisance deer harvesting has come to an end in the City of Richland Center. Per the DNR regulations, the end of, the end of March was the deadline. We were able to harvest five deer in the City of Richland Center, and all five deer were donated to city residents. And then I can report that one deer did test positive for CWD, that was taking on, taking on city property. And that's all I got.
And Billy, and I, this is like clockwork, because we've had it this spring, probably the last week, the letters and calls are coming to me on the nuisance property, so I'll discuss those with you.
Absolutely.
So the one, the first few are ones that I know we're working on. They're the, kind of the obvious ones, but every spring when people get outside more, and I'm glad they do, though, that they point these things out to us, so...
Yep, and I think it'd be a good reminder, you know, now would be the time, you know, if anybody sees, sees those properties, whether you know or you don't know if they're being looked at already, to contact, you know, me at the Richland Center Police Department. And then maybe it'd be a good option for me and Aaron and Ashley to get together, maybe put a notice out on the website, I can even do something on the Facebook page as well, just reminding people that spring is sprung, and cleanup is, is now the time to do that.
Karen, did you have something?
Yeah, a constituent that asked about that address specifically as well, so I'll give them the update.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, did we notice, we just had large item pickup, and I know some people had stuff up there days in advance. Yesterday, I don't know why, but Town and Country had a crew in town going back to get something missed or didn't get.
Yeah, there were multiple addresses in town, or street areas, and I know Terry Nelson was also working with them, that they just got missed, whether that was unfamiliar with the territory or miscommunication on the pickup people, but yet they came back and were remedying that, that situation.
So we think there's, we don't think there's houses that still had stuff at the curb that would be associated with that?
There's still apartments, so if they're considered commercial, Town and Country's not doing large item pickup for them, and it'd have to be in their contract with Town and Country, but as far as any residential property, Town and Country will go back if missed and collect it.
So if it's an apartment and somebody put something out, and Town and Country doesn't do large item pickup, what happens to the stuff that people put outside?
That's a good question, but it should be handled by that apartment.
So that's the landlord's responsibility to get that removed?
Correct.
All right. Okay, I'll bet we have another list real soon. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you, Billy. Item Eleven, Appointments to Reddys Commission's Boards and Confirm Appointments, stay tuned, in two weeks we'll do a bunch of that. And for all payment of bills, the council reviews those bills, it is my duty to review the following report of Recommendation Committee on Finance and Budget regarding the bills presented to the common council on Monday, April 4th, 2022, filed in the office of the city clerk treasurer. To the common council of the City of Richland Center, Wisconsin, the matter of the bills presented on 4/4/22, having been referred from the Committee on Finance and Budget, and said committee having duly investigated these bills, hereby make the following recommendation to the council, that the bills presented on 4/4/2022 be paid with the following adjustments and/or exceptions, none are listed, it is signed by all three members of Finance and Budget Committee. And once the councils have a moment to review those bills, entertain a motion to pay them.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Templey, any discussion of the bill? Hearing none, Aaron will need a roll call, please.
Alderperson, Collins?
Aye.
Templey?
Aye.
Culver?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item Thirteen, Public Comment, No Council Action Will Be Taken on Any Matter Originating Under This Item. I've not been made aware of anyone who wants to address the council tonight, is there anyone who would like to do so? Okay, Item Fourteen, Mayor and Alderperson's Committee Commission Board Reports and Comments and/or Items To Be Discussed At A Future Meeting. We'll begin with Mr. Scotty Wallace.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Sue Fruit.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Collins?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Nothing tonight? Really? All right.
I was told not to bring my list.
Were you? I'm sure we'll be seeing you again, sir. Karen Templey?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Carson Culver?
Only, I'm quite willing and thankful to work another year, but I am getting along with the tooth to use a down-home saying, and I would like to encourage the public in our district to think about next year's election, and see them up with somebody a little younger and closer to the mic.
Thank you, sir. Is that it, sir?
Yep.
Melanie Walters?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Ryan Cairns?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Item Fifteen, Department and Utility Reports, et cetera. Mr. Frye?
Yes, I would like to say, today we did move forward with Story Field, the ash trees are now and gone now, so all that's left is a stump switch we'll do sometime this summer, but the trees didn't get removed today, so...
How much of that work is left in the city, these ash trees?
For the parks, we finished, last week, before we finished in the park. So for the City of Richland Center, they have maybe six trees left, which I'm kinda watching, hoping maybe, just hoping they'll last for a while. Otherwise, the City of Richland Center is done with ash trees.
All right, and how many trees have been removed?
Six hundred, 675.
Six hundred. Dave, how do we dispose of the trees?
A lot of it was ground up, some of it was sold, it was, it went many directions.
The ones that were sellable, how do we do that?
I went with Rockbridge Stone Mill, they bought quite a bit. And then on our part, if the parks had time, we tried to cut parts up for firewood and would sell it. As of this year, though, we did not do much of that, because most of the trees that we removed this year were maple, which is not a sellable tree. I just didn't see enough for us to spend that much time in it. So, otherwise, we sold a lot of firewood and a lot of logs over the last five years.
You know what I'm gonna ask you next?
No.
Did you know that lots of firewood and trees get sold on Wisconsin's road?
How were those sold, right? Did you, did you list them, did you, how did you do that?
I just called Rockbridge. They took the trees, they sort of looked at what we had, they took what was in the parks, they took what was in the cemetery, anything that was in the boulevard, they wouldn't touch it because of steel in the tree. People have a habit of hanging birdhouses, whatever should be, ornaments. Once you get steel in that tree, they don't want nothing to do with it because of the cost of their blades for when they cut this. So in turn, then we would cut that up for firewood and sold it as firewood then.
Do you have any idea how much money was raised in the sale of these trees?
No, I could check with Sean, because we did keep track of that. I know it's gotta push $25,000 probably, over the last five years.
Actually, I'd like to know that, just for future reference, maybe at the next meeting, I'd kinda like to know that.
Okay.
Anything else, Dave?
No.
Okay. All right, anything else, Mr. Jones?
Okay.
Mr. Glassberger?
Two things really quick, one, I'd just like...
Two things really quick, one, I'd just like to report that tomorrow evening, we'll be holding what we hope to be our final branding committee meeting. That's a joint meeting with the city and the county, so both the county and the city are moving through a process identifying logos and mottos. So that's been a really good process, and we hope that, again, tomorrow evening, that we will, the subcommittees basically will come to a conclusion, and then we'll have something to present to full council and to the appropriate committee and then the full county board. So look forward to that, maybe even by next meeting. Second thing is, is I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware that we are having an economic development summit on Tuesday, April 26th, and everyone from the general public is invited, I want to make sure all of you are aware. I'll actually grab a flyer and hand one to each of you before you leave tonight. That event will be held at the Richland Center City Auditorium. We'll have a social meet and greet at about 5:30, program will probably go until about 8:00 with a report of the things that, many of which you are already aware of, that we've been accomplishing over the last two years, as well as what we hope for the future, and then we'll have a panel discussion where we have six panel participants that we hope to be able to take questions from the audience. So it would be great to have everyone here, there, and it would be also great to have everyone from the public there. So thank you for the extra time.
Thanks, Jason, Bill will report, will anything else tonight?
No, I kind of jumped it, I see you changed it, I think around, so now I understand everything.
Roll set?
Yep.
Okay, here, Joyce?
It's today's election day again, and things were going smoothly, the polls are now closed. So we'll be using our machines to tally our, our final votes, hopefully, that is completed at this time. So getting up there right after the meeting.
I mentioned you and your machines on the radio again, Mr. ...
I heard that.
Yes, all right, I did think it was slick when I voted today, I did. Ashley?
I just want to thank Erin for a job well done today with election, managing this council meeting and then everything with the poll workers and making sure we had a seamless election, so thank you.
All right. Item 16, consideration to move into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute of Section 1985-1E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining business required a closed session, body will engage in a private party financial review and discuss related developer incentives through TID number six. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Motion to go into closed, is there a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, closed session at this time, if you say a five, I say a nine.
Aye.
Closed, we are now in closed session.